All right, it's seven o'clock and I'd like to call together the February 6, 2025 School Committee meeting. We are officially in session. Tonight's meeting is Zoom only due to the inclement weather. Typically, we would start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We don't have a flag this evening, so we're going to go right into our consent agenda, which was posted along with the minutes to the February 20, sorry, to the January 23rd, 2025 meeting, as well as the oath to bills and payroll. Elaine had reached out about a discrepancy in the packet, so typically what I asked for a motion to accept, but before I do that, Elaine, did you just want to provide the committee an explanation?
Yeah, the version of the minutes that were in the packet was not the version that I approved as clerk, so I would like to approve-
Elaine, can I interrupt? I'm sorry. If minutes were fine, it was just the date on the agenda.
Yeah, no, the minutes, the minutes are not, because some of the things that I had corrected are not corrected in the version that's in the packet.
Oh, you had corrections on your?
Yeah, I always make some edits for clarity.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to-
Yeah, and so the edits that I had made were not reflected in this version.
Okay.
So I would like to approve those minutes at the next meeting. So we'll end up approving the minutes from two meetings at the next-
Okay, okay.
No worries. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. So with that knowledge, is it all right if everybody, we just don't accept, we don't make a motion for tonight? And we'll revisit those next meeting?
Yeah, but should we still make a motion to accept the oath to bills and payroll?
We should.
Yep. So I move that we accept the oath to bills and payroll.
Motion made by Elaine.
Second that.
Second, Stacy. Some roll call votes in virtual this evening. Stacy?
Stacy Scott, yes.
Janine?
Janine Wood, yes.
Elaine?
Elaine Sandelman, yes.
And Bino, you're on mute. There you go.
Bino Patel, yes.
Justin McCarthy votes yes as well. All right, this is our first opportunity for interested citizens. So if there's anybody with us this evening that would like to speak before the school committee, it's your first shot. There'll be a second shot at the end of the meeting.
We do not have any.
All right. We will now move to our recognition portion of the evening. Raquel, thank you for joining us this evening. Student Representative Raquel Rodriguez will give a report of events for each school.
Thank you for having me, and I hope everyone had a good day off. So for Shaker Lane, online registration for the 2025-26 kindergarten school year is open, and families are encouraged to register as soon as possible. And then next Wednesday, Shaker Lane will celebrate Global Play Day, where it is an event that encourages students to play without screens and structured games. For Russell Street, Andrew Green from Potato Hill Poetry will work, will be in the school to work with fourth graders. So thank you to the PTA for supporting this partnership. And RSS is happy to bring back the staff and student basketball game, so mark your calendars for February 25th. The middle school took their math testing this yesterday and their ELA testing last Wednesday, and it was very successful. And then they will have the seventh and eighth grade Valentine's Day dance on Friday from 6:00 PM. Finally, for the high school, Saturday, students will be participating in the Rise Against Hunger Meal Packaging Event, and it's from 10 to 12. And then finally, on the 11th, the guidance office will be hosting a junior class college planning night at 6:00 PM in the auditorium for all juniors and their parents.
Raquel, I may have lost you. I was having internet issues there. Did you wrap up?
Yes.
Okay. I've lost everybody visually as well, except for you, Raquel. Superintendent Kelly Clenshy, is there anything else you wish to report in terms of recognition before we move on into our presentations?
Yep, you bet. I'd sent the school committee a clip from WBZ covering our hydroponic farm. Nice to get some coverage out there. And what's really powerful about this addition to our district is that our students are involved in planting the seedlings. And we've been using lettuce in our cafeteria for a few months now, growing through the hydroponic farm. So I'd like to thank our food services director, Lea Baco, again, for her innovation and creativeness within our food service program. Have some exciting news. Second exciting news, we were contacted by DESI this week, actually yesterday. And every year, the board or the National Department of Education sends us, or sends the state more correctly, an opportunity for the state to nominate schools to obtain blue ribbon status. Blue ribbon status for a school is one of the highest honors that you could ever have. And I'm happy to report that we've been encouraged to submit an application for our middle school. And we'll receive more information about what that application entails next week. Decisions will be made in the fall of 2025. For all of us, this is a real celebration. Most superintendents never ever see a blue ribbon school in their district. This would be the second one for me. So, you know, and working in a district that is doing whatever they can to be the best that we can be. So stay tuned for that. And the only unknown at this point in time, I hate to say this, we all have a lot of trepidation out there, but I'm hoping the Department of Education will exist in the fall of 2025. From my readings, I'm not an expert, but it is written into law, and it would have to be debated through Congress. So I'm hoping that it's still around for us to perhaps be one of the successful recipients of that award. Third recognition, last weekend, middle school drama club had the Newsies juniors present or play musical. And I have to tell you, the quality of the singing, the acting, the video props that they were using, it was, it was an incredible performance. One of the best I've ever seen in my career. And I know Janine was there Friday night. I had the opportunity to run into Janine, so Janine might want to comment as well. But our drama program, our musical program at the middle school and high school are so strong. I was talking to a few parents that night, and they were telling me that we're now having students' choice into our school district to just be part of our drama program and music program. So kudos to everybody involved in making that happen. Tracy O'Neill works tirelessly with that middle school play to make sure that, you know, things go well. And we had over 50, 50 students take part in the musical. So it's a great, a great, great evening.
I will echo that, Kelly. It was such a good production. The friend that I took several times just looked at me and said, "I love this." This is, we had, the friend I took, we had a great time. And watching 57 students come together, work collaboratively. We had just talked about how we, how this school district had worked to make the high school available to the middle school drama. And that night, I'm like, "I am so glad we did that." This paid off in spades, because, you know, there's just nothing like having that kind of experience in your school experience. And 57 students together, working on that, you know there were bonds made that, there's no other way we could have made that happen. So, thank you so much.
And that's it for my acknowledgements.
Good, good. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to move into the presentation portion of the evening. We've got four presentations planned. Before we kick that off, I'll just bring your attention to the highlighted, the blue box on tonight's agenda. So I like to read these so we can, if allowed, pay particular attention to these topics. We're visiting standard four and standard one. They're out of order, but I'm going to read them in this order anyways. So alignment to the district's strategic plan, standard four, climate and culture, foster respective and responsive culture that provides a safe, secure, and safe, secure learning and work environment. The essential question for this evening is how can the district build upon past DEIB initiatives to involve more stakeholders and create a district-wide action plan? Second essential question, how does our financial planning reflect the district's strategic plan, core values, mission, and beliefs? And then there's an additional standard one here, which will apply to the first presentation, I believe, which is standard one, curriculum instruction assessment. Align and enhance curriculum instruction and assessment to continually improve student achievement. Essential question, how does the new competency determination align with the district standards of offering a rigorous high school program of studies to all students? So moving into our first presentation this evening, Littleton Public Schools competency determination, Director of Teaching and Learning, Elizabeth Steele, will give a presentation on that topic. We've got you slotted for 15 minutes. Take it away.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. The competency determination, I feel like we've been hearing, it's been in the news. We've heard about it since November, or pre-November, the election says it was on the ballot as a question for the state of Massachusetts. And so we've had to work quickly, but effectively, to be able to bring this presentation and this proposal to you this evening. So the next slide, please. Thank you. So this is the new language that's in this statute. The first half of this is the same. Where the change comes in is where it said, it used to say previously, as measured by the assessment instruments described in section one, which was MCAS. And now that has changed for the language that you see here in red text and underlined. And so it is satisfactorily completing coursework certified by the district, demonstrating mastery in the knowledge and the skill sets that are put forth in the frameworks that were previously assessed by the MCAS. And they're saying the MCAS that was administered in 2023. So what that means for us as a district is that we have to look at and certify coursework taken by students in the following topic areas. English Language Arts at the 10th grade level, mathematics, including Algebra I and geometry, because those were the two types of maths that were assessed on the 2023 Math MCAS. And then science is either biology, chemistry, introductory physics, or technology and engineering. So what that means with regards to MCAS, next slide, please. Thank you. Steve or Dorothy, I don't know which one is on, so thank you to whoever is managing the slides this evening. What that means directly to MCAS, just to be clear, right, is that MCAS is required under ed reform law. So it's required federally, so we have to maintain the facilitation and administration of MCAS. So we are still required as a district to administer the MCAS assessments. Participation is required by all students to participate in MCAS assessment. The performance, as well as the participation of our students, is still connected to the accountability system from the state level. And then performance on the high school MCAS is still connected to scholarships and seal of bilinguacy. So there's still interest from students to perform and do well in order to receive either or both scholarships, as well as the seal of bilinguacy, demonstrating proficiency in their, in their own first language, as well as a secondary language. So to reiterate and make very clear, the ballot question that was passed in November by Massachusetts voters was to take MCAS away as a matter of competency determination as it relates to high school graduation. It did not take away the assessment as a whole. So as shown on this slide, we are still required to facilitate and administer and participate in the MCAS assessments. Next slide, please. What this means is that in order to graduate from a Massachusetts public high school, students must complete two distinct, but many times related or overrelated tasks. The first is a competency determination, what we're really talking about this evening, oftentimes abbreviated just by CD. And the second is local graduation requirements. And so the competency determination was previously, it was designated by DESI at the state level, and it was through MCAS. And so students at the high school had to reach a certain level on the MCAS, and they would receive their, their CD. And then by the local district, we had set graduation requirements such as credits in amount of coursework, community service, and anything set at the local level that students would also have to complete successfully. If a student completed both of these things, they then were able to earn a diploma at graduation. As of January, this is because of the ballot change, or the ballot question, excuse me, and the vote, as of January 2025, the competency determination now has to be designated by local districts. And so now it is on us as a local district to determine what is the CD and how do students earn it, as well as continuing on with our local graduation requirements. So on the next slide, we see how this relates to policy. And so our policy IKF is graduation requirements, is our policy on graduation requirements. And so we are going to need to update the policy to include the CD language that we agree upon. And then the second thing, to be very clear, is that at this point in time, we are not looking to change any local graduation requirements at this time. So everything related to local graduation requirements can and will stay the same as of right now. On the next slide, you will see our proposed CD language. And so if they're on the screen for you, and normally I wouldn't do this to you, but I'm going to read it out loud so we all have it and can take a moment to process it. So the proposed language that LPS is putting forth for CD is the satisfactory completion by earning a passing grade of the coursework listed below will serve as the student's CD as defined by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. English 10 or equivalent or higher, and Algebra I and Geometry or equivalent or higher, and Biology or Physics or Chemistry or Technology and Engineering or equivalent or higher. Achieving CD means satisfactory completing coursework that has been certified by Littleton Public Schools as showing mastery of the skills, competencies, and knowledge contained in the state academic standards and curriculum frameworks. This, to get to this, while seemingly a brief statement, was a lot of collaborative work by the LPS administrators, as well as other districts, because all districts in the state have to be working on this. And so there were a lot of conversations happening across districts. And while many are very similar, there was a lot of conversation of what are you including and why are you including such things. In creating our CD, we ran through many different scenarios to ensure that our CD remains rigorous, but also accessible to all students. And we believe that as it stands right now on the screen in front of you, that it does do this, and it does allow graduation pathways to all students in Littleton. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have related to the CD.
I'm actually seeing a silver lining with this regarding high school science, because when the science MCAS at 10th grade was the graduation requirement, many districts were focusing heavily on biology as the thing that needed to be passed in order to graduate from high school, to the point where DESI was, I don't know, I forget if this actually happened, but they were getting rid of the chemistry test because so few districts were adopting that one. There wasn't a technology or engineering MCAS. So it forced districts to really double down on biology as the science that was the focus in high school. So now with this new competency determination, all of the different domains of science are equally valued. So I see that as a real win.
Yeah, Elaine, it's interesting that you say that, because they were intentional in going back to the MCAS of 2023, which included chemistry, because in 2024, that was not an offering. So they did go back an extra year, so that way, excuse me, it was a bit more inclusive of other sciences.
Good. Quick question. Is there any work towards, and I appreciate all the work done here, and this is a great start, but is there any work towards including civics or history in any kind of our competency determinations, so that our students, you know, leave, leave, leave school knowing there are three branches of government, little things like that? Sorry, that was too sarcastic. Apologize.
No, that's a, that's a good question. So it's interesting that you bring that up, because there is a lot of conversation around this at the state level and across the different districts. So as of right now, the way the statute is written, is that those are the assessments that we have to certify the coursework in, right? So the English, the math, and the science. However, this, the actual regulation does say that at some point, the state can have us, have to certify competency in history and social sciences, as well as world language. So the language is built into the regulation, but the state is not requiring anything further at this point in time. At our recent DESI, which is the board that oversees DESI, they did have a conversation about this. And some of the immediate feedback was like, let's, let's transition and get ourselves kind of set up, and then reevaluate what areas we are doing, and if we want to add more areas. And so that was reaffirmed at a conversation today at the state level, that the state does have the right to add other content areas in, such as history and social sciences and world language specifically. But at this point in time, they are leaving it as we have written with the three content areas right now. But that doesn't mean to say, Janine, that in the future, that that is not an area that will be included.
I appreciate that, and I would encourage us to be part of the movement that helps make that happen if there's, if there needs to be. It's, I just think that's so important.
Any other questions for Ms. Steele? Or comments from school committee members? Hearing none. Would like a motion to accept the competency determination plan as presented.
I move to accept the competency determination plan as presented.
Motion made by Janine, seconded by Elaine. It's funny, I'm having to go off of verbal cues here, because I can't see everybody. So if I get it wrong, let me know. So motion made by Janine, seconded by Elaine. This will be a roll call vote. Janine?
Janine Wood, yes.
Elaine?
Elaine Sandelman, yes.
Bino?
Bino Patel, yes.
Stacy?
Stacy Scott, yes.
Justin McCarthy votes yes as well. Motion carries 5-0. Perfect. Thank you very much. Our second presentation this evening is DE, sorry, DEIB update. Director of Student Services, Lynn Snow, and school committee member Elaine Stentleman will give an update on DEIB.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Justin. I'll actually, since my presentations are back to back, Elaine, if you'd like to start, I'll hand it over to you, and then I'll, I'll jump in.
Okay. Is your, are your slides about the DEIB team meeting, or is it about a different aspect of DEIB? The meeting that we had last week?
It'll be, yes, an overall kind of recap, look back, look forward, look ahead.
Yeah, why don't you go first? Because then I'll just build on what you say.
All right, yeah, absolutely. So I don't have slides. This is just really wanting to give everybody a little bit of a, kind of a recap, a midpoint, a reflection back. And so just to reemphasize that, our goal is through that, through our collective efforts, we're going to continue to strive towards a system that's equitable for all, and that we will work to ensure that this is embedded and practiced for all of our school community members and stakeholders in order to feel a sense of belonging. And so for the 24-25 school year, our focus is on supporting the efforts at each school, and meeting quarterly to discuss and strategize and collaborate on how best to support these efforts. So reflecting back on, now that we're at the midpoint of the year, I definitely want to emphasize the positive momentum that we've built over the past five years. And so just to give you a quick look back about how we started the year, our first meeting in November was very well attended. It featured a productive roundtable discussion where each of the principals shared their initiatives taking place at the schools. And then during this session, we encouraged participants to identify ways that they could contribute to supporting these initiatives. We also emphasized the importance of following up with the principals to offer assistance on projects that were of interest to them, and that the time between meetings now is dedicated to, into turning these discussions into meaningful action. Last year, we talked a bit about senseless acts of equity, and this year marks the continued evolution of that work, building on the foundation we've laid and, and wanting to expand our impact. So then we met at the end of January and provided everybody with an opportunity to share how they've supported the respective schools in advancing the DEIB initiatives. A couple of highlights were the support that we've provided to Parks and Rec as they've launched an offering of adaptive sports. Of course, our continued participation in playbook initiative. This is a quick aside, an exciting evolution of that program is that this year, all the districts are partnered up with another school district. So we'll be taking our show on the road and bringing the students and trainers out to another district next week. And then we're in the midst of planning for a cross-district Special Olympics Day of Games in May. So there's been several meetings in between November and the end of January related to that. And then our next steps are to continue on this path with a focus of, on service. So as we continue to advance our district's equity efforts, I think it's essential to recognize that true equity is not only about the initiatives that we implement, but also how we hold ourselves accountable to the students we serve. And accountability is crucial to ensuring that our work has a meaningful impact. And so that will kind of tie into my presentation on the integrated monitoring review process that I'll be educating everybody about next. But that's really all I think I had to share, and then I'll just pass it over to you, Elaine.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so we met as a team, the DEIB team, last week. And as Lynn was saying, each, each leader shared what was happening in their respective building regarding DEIB. And it was a wider range of different initiatives. What was happening at Shaker Lane and Russell Street mostly fell under the category of belonging, which makes sense for that grade span. A lot of talk about the playbook initiative at the middle school and the high school. There were, one thing of interest to me was the, at the Russell Street, talking about the essential questions for the wit and wisdom program, which I thought were very thought provoking. So I'll share them here. So grade three is how do stories help us understand immigrants' experiences? So I think that's very important for viewing history through multiple perspectives. Grade four is why is it important to understand all sides of a story? And grade five is how did the Civil War impact people? So again, it's, it's telling the, the history through all of the different people that were impacted by it. So I think that's a really important way to, an entry point for DEIB initiatives. But one thing I wanted to talk about, it, it did seem, from my perspective, that the schools were working on individual initiatives that didn't seem connected under a coherent plan. Everybody's following through on things with very good intentions and trying to build upon the training that they've received. But for us as a district to really be committed to DEIB, I would love to see a more integrated plan with goals that we are working toward. You know, I looked at our vision statement, which talks about evolving toward a more diverse community. And I think that's, that's wonderful language, but it doesn't point us toward a certain goal. So it made me think about the presentation, I think it was at the last school committee meeting, about the portrait of a learner and all of that work that's going on across the community between, you know, there's, you've got teachers involved, you've got leaders involved. I think you've got students involved too, right? But you've, you've already got the infrastructure set up where you're involving a cross-section of the community. And I would love to see as part of that work to integrate more DEIB initiatives that are articulated across the grade spans. And so at every school, we're working on smaller parts of a whole. So I, and I know that the portrait of a learner is being integrated with a strategic plan. So I looked at the strategic plan to see what the through lines were. And part of our vision with the strategic plan is promote an inclusive culture and climate that honors diversity and equity, models respect, responsibility, integrity, and accountability. So that would be a great thing to align with. One of our core beliefs is that everyone has the right to learn in a safe and secure environment that links to belonging. And then more- And then more specifically, go standard three, I mean, sorry, standard four, goal two, ensure the district and schools are free from discrimination and harassment and support student wellness. So since all of that work with portrait of a learner is digging into the strategic plan and trying to align it, I would like to propose that DEIB also be a focus point in that work. So I wanted to throw that out and see what the rest of the folks thought.
Sure, thank you both for sharing. Stacy, you're back. Stacy, you have your hand up. I just wanted to recognize you if you had something to say.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I was just plugging in my computer. So I appreciate the work that you guys are doing and I just wanted to address maybe the elephant in the room in regards to kind of like the political climate in regards to DEI. And I just wanted to maybe name or at least discuss that our district has not changed our perception in regards to DEI, regardless of whatever political climate is out there. Because this is a very important topic, especially right now. And it seems like you guys have done a lot of work in the past. We've done a lot of work as a district and I just wanted to name the fact that, that has not changed. That our, our focus is still to make sure that all the kids feel safe and included and all of our families in the town are, are welcome and, and are safe in our district. And I just wanted to at least name that or just call that out and just say that we know that things have changed, but in our district here at Littleton, things remain the same and that we're here to protect the kids and their safety and their integrity and their comfort level here. So just wanted to name that.
Thank you for saying that, Stacy. I a hundred percent agree.
Well said, Stacy. Thank you.
And.
Stacy, I think that ties in so well to the work that we're doing this year and the focus of our efforts this year is because we really are moving into a theory of action. We are, we are really taking the, the conversations into, to at the building level, really taking the time and acting on those so that we can support and grow and evolve all of these initiatives that are happening across all of the schools in so many different ways.
And Stacy, thank you.
That too, because I, as a community, we have to protect that. As a small community, there's a lot of things going on in the world, but as a small community, I think our, our, everyone in this town like depends on us to keep that integrity and those, a lot of those values protected and safe regardless of what's going on outside of our little bubble. So I just, I really appreciate that we continue with these efforts and we have a stronghold on these efforts and that, that, that those aren't changed or that there's no waiver in how strong that we are, strongly that we are going to be like pursuing some of these things to just make sure that all the kids are, kids and families are feeling safe and included.
We, we are committed to, to the safety and wellbeing of all schools or all students in all of our schools. We're not going to wave off that. And this is who we are as an organization and, and everything we do is, is tied into those areas. We want every student to feel safe and supported in all of our schools. That, that's one of, one of the, the key mandates that we have and it's really not a mandate, it's a belief. You know, I'm thinking about the DEIB and, and, you know, I've been in education long enough to know how acronyms are, are created and often replace things that are already done in schools. And I'm going to go back 30 years. And 30 years ago, it wasn't called DEIB, but good schools, effective schools took care of all students. All students were welcome. We had an effective school movement. Then we had a, a community school movement. So these concepts were alive and wow, we didn't call it DEIB. Having said that though, DEIB is, is interwoven into SEL, it's interwoven into our curriculum. And I, I, I really want to emphasize the, the fact that it has to be a component in everything we, we do. I don't want DEIB compartmentalized in a box. It needs to be within the, the bigger circle of everything that we do within our schools. And I, I do appreciate the, the conversation Elaine about aligning it better with our strategic plan. I, I, I think it should be. I, I think we can do that quite easily. The new teacher rubric does what I've just said. I've, I've been, we've been meeting with our LEA to negotiate the new teacher rubric and it is dispersed throughout the rubric. There is no box that says DEIB. It's, it's applied to, to every aspect of, of what good teaching is and what good schools are. So I guess on that note, maybe I can, I can segue into, into something similar that's interrelated. You know, we, we have been inundated with executive orders with, with the new presidency. And with that has, has come a lot of discussion and, and training for, for superintendents and leaders throughout this state, heavily relying on our lawmakers and our lawyers to interpret what these executive orders actually mean. Can they be implemented? How far can they be implemented? Where is Congress in all of this? And I mentioned that at the beginning of this meeting, the Department of Education really needs to, to be involved in, in determining with Congress what the next steps are. It's written into law. I, I don't believe that one individual can just eradicate a department that's written into law. But having said that, we're, we're in new territory here and we're all trying to figure it out. We have a very active AG's office. We've met with them a number of times with the executive order that, that pertains to new immigration laws and enforcement of immigration laws. Our lawyers had a set of protocols for us to use prior to the executive order that came into place. The protocols are designed to protect all students and that's what we're, we're doing. The AG's office, three days later, released some protocols to all school districts and guidelines that we're using. All of those, those protocols and guidelines have been given to our administrators. We've, we've talked to them, trained them. Our front end staff all have those guidelines and protocols as well. So I don't want anybody to think out there that if we ever did get a visit by ICE, that they would have free access to our schools. That's not the case. There are protocols in place that have to be followed. Any, anybody who wants to interview a child that pertains to immigration would not be entering the school. They would be sent to central office and dealing with either myself, Beth or Lynn. And those protocols would be put in place at that time. Personal information, personal student information by a third party, we don't disclose that kind of information unless we have written permission from a parent. So I just want everybody out there to, to realize that, that we do have, have protocols and guidelines in place to, to deal with the, the new executive order. And we rely very heavily on the AG's office and, and all the lawyers that are trying to interpret the whirlwind of other executive orders that are out there. And these things don't happen overnight. I wish they did, but there, there's a lot of new things going on. And, and part of the challenge that, that we're all facing is what is the process in terms of how these executive orders come into play and how are they debated and how are they implemented? So I, I think for the time being, we're, we're going to have to just, just keep, keep moving along and, and relying on the expertise that we have in our field to help us maneuver whatever executive orders that are coming across the table that may or may not affect communities and schools. I just wanted to put that out there. It, it seems to be a topic of conversation ever since we, we've had a change in, in presidency and, and has taken a lot of everybody's time up as well.
Thank you Superintendent Clancy. Stacy, your hand is up. Would you wish to speak again?
Uh, yes, so I, like, I, I appreciate you, I think, giving us a little bit of comfort in knowing what the procedures and the protocols are in the schools in regards to like what your staff has been trained to do, given a lot of the changes that we have going on. I think my only question for you is, do we have kind of like a secondary backup for understanding if? Is the LPD involved in if we have someone at the school who is maybe not following our protocols legally? Like what, like there's a buffer, there's like a, there's a very gray area of like our procedures and our protocols versus maybe federal or state procedures and protocols? And, and how do we protect the kids while we figure that out without, I think, traumatizing the kids is kind of what I'm asking is like, do you have any relationship with LPD? Like how are we, how are we dealing with that?
Great question. And yes, we do. They have been given all the protocols as well. And our, you know, my expectation as superintendent of schools is that, you know, these protocols are what we're using in our district. So we would, you know, we've, we've asked for their support if we do end up in a situation where, where we do need their support. And, and, and you have to, these people that, that maybe coming into our schools are, are well versed in the laws and it's our job to make sure that, that, that the laws are enforced the way they should be enforced. And, and so I've, I've had a conversation with the chief and, and definitely on board with, with what we're doing. So I'm glad that you brought that up.
Good, Stacy?
Yeah, yeah, as long, as long as the staff feels supported and like understanding, like they can defer to someone who has some validity or like something that gives them some rooting and like yes or no, I just, I want to make sure that they, they feel confident that they have someone to back them up when they say like, you have to wait until so and so gets here and they can kind of stand strong and knowing and feeling comfortable with that without feeling frightened. That's.
Our other staff have, have already had conversations with their administrators and they are to refer anybody to the office. And then that, and at that time, the office would refer them to central office. So we have, we have clear procedures in place. We, we don't want anybody dealing with, with a third party in our schools without knowing the protocols and, and, and those protocols have to come from, from the administration of the front end staff. And then they're at, and then it's directly comes to central office. So we, we have, we have a set of expectations, Stacy. I think that's what you're asking and, and people are well versed in those. And, and that's the third, first thing we were thinking about is, you know, our schools have around 80 staff in each school and we have to make sure that the staff know what's expected of them in these situations. So we've gone over that with them.
Yes, yes. So I, I want to make sure that like if someone, someone were to come up to Dorothy's desk and say, I have a badge to do this, that she could, she could comfortably say, no, you have to, I have the support of our town LPD. You cannot do that. That's, that's all, I just want to make sure that our staff under, they understand, they not only understand the protocol, but feel supported by being able to like stand by that protocol and not just be like, uh, I don't know, this makes me feel really uncomfortable. That's the only thing I want to make sure that they.
No, it's pretty black and white and, and I mean, there, there are so many different avenues that, that we have to be well versed in, in this area. So it's not just a matter of showing up, it's what they show up with. And, and that ascertain our, our next moves. So I feel good about the protocols. I don't think anybody would, would feel that they wouldn't be backed up at this point in time. Littleton Police Department would be involved if, if somebody was not doing what was expected of them within the, within the framework of the law. So.
Elaine?
Yeah, thanks. Stacy, thank you for elevating that. That was something that was on my mind too. The other thing I wanted to highlight is sort of the other aspect of DEIB where there's a, there's a lot of toxic language coming from the current administration and it's swirling around in social media and it's sort of infiltrating our culture right now. And which is why DEIB has, has become more of a concern, something that I'm thinking about with our school district, almost as a way to strengthen our ability to highlight our core values with our students so that if they do, do start hearing, you know, some racist or bigoted or exclusionary language, that they will be, have a strong enough grounding through the DEIB initiatives in our district, that they will feel like they can make good decisions and push back, that, that this toxic stew that's, that we're sort of simmering in right now will, you know, will, will be a little more immune from it if we really elevate our actions in the district and make sure that students understand our core values and are supported in actions that they take to implement those. So that's why I was thinking about how can we elevate our DEIB initiatives? How can we integrate it more into all of the things that we're doing so that it, it really strengthens our students' abilities to push back when they know something's not right?
That's a great point. And, and I mean, the work that we do every day exemplifies exactly what we're talking about. And, and I, I agree that, that we need a perhaps maybe a heightened awareness of, we all know what's happening, Elaine, it's pretty hard not to. And, and we will work with our students and continue to work with our students so that they feel comfortable addressing those situations. The playbook initiative is a prime example of student engagement and action. And, you know, having that should bring great comfort to all of us because this isn't teacher oriented. This is, this is student, student grassroots initiatives that, that focus on DEIB. So we're definitely headed in the right direction, but as, as you all know, we have a, a set of values that we live by within our school district. Those values are shared by the majority of the community, but I would, I would not make the statement that those values are shared by all of our community. So there, there is opportunity to have a disagreement in, in, in terms of values in certain areas. We're cognizant of that and that, that's, that was in existence far before what we're doing, dealing with now. So the, the key is to, to give our students the skill sets and, and the critical thinking skills to be able to advocate and treat everybody with respect. And, and I think we're doing, we are doing a good job of that, but that's something that we, we, we just can't take for granted. It needs, it needs continual work as we move forward.
Good, thank you. I'd like to offer my two cents, if that's okay. And I don't want to reiterate a lot of the points made and, and go round and round, but I think it's an important topic, obviously. Stacy, thank you for calling this out. And I think we did a pretty good job of talking about Littleton's culture and how this is important to us. It's a core value. We tried to stay away from the politics the best we can. I heard us talk about students should feel safe. I feel like that's pretty low on the totem pole. That's sort of like in a, if you don't feel safe, how could you possibly be in a learning environment? So I think striving to celebrate diversity within the community, working towards all our students feeling included, a sense of belonging, that only just, that only elevates our students' opportunity for success. So we're not talking about how government contracts get signed and offices, employment takes place. We're talking about taking care of our 13, 1400 students and putting them in the best environment to become exceptional global citizens. So I think you're right, Elaine, it probably is the time to sort of double down on our efforts to just say, doesn't matter what's happening outside, inside Littleton Public Schools, we want to make sure that this remains a focus so that we can all take care of one another. If for some crazy reason, like we weren't able to use DEIB anymore as an acronym, the core values are still going to remain there. So we would just, like you were saying, Kelly, it used to be called the sense. The core values are still going to remain there. So we would just, like you were saying, Kelly, it used to be called the sense community or whatever it was. That's gonna take place. Um, that needs to take place. And I feel confident as a school committee member. With the central office and the um administration and staff that we have in place that we're doing. A darn good job with it, but it's never ending work because. Every year uh, a third or a quarter of the student population changes out of the building. And there's just new stuff popping up on social media every day and. Um, it's tireless work, but it's, it's really, it's really, really important work. So. We need to uh continue with these efforts, make sure that the curriculum that we choose um. To administer has this built in and it's interwoven throughout. Um. Day, day to day concepts and that we welcome opportunity for student voices to be heard. Um, in a, in an environment where people are willing to listen. And if we feel that there's a situation where that's. You know. Um, boiling up or there's behavior or. Language that's inappropriate, we need to take swift action. That, that's what I would say to the administration is like. Swift action, please. Just get to the bottom of it. Um, we're all. We all have best intentions and sometimes um, what are we, we're educating what like five year olds, eighteen year olds, you know, they're, they're learning themselves. They're. Um, they're, they're doing the best they can and sometimes they need to be redirected or steered in the right direction. So. I um. Thank you for everyone's words, you know, happy to hear from you if you have anything to add to the conversation. If not, that's quite all right and we can move on to the next topic.
I don't know that there's much I can add. I, I really appreciate the conversation and what everyone has said and the commitment to the work um. Versus the letters themselves. And I think that's such a good point is it's the actual work and the actions that we're doing. Um, and I think that's a really important distinction in this day and age. And that's what the commitment is sort of resounding and resonating here. Um. So really appreciate that. And I think Kelly to the, this um. Roller coaster of a ride in terms of funding. Uh, because I know certainly in the nonprofit world, there was a minute where we all thought we had lost all our funding and then we didn't. And so I think. There is still more uh conversation to be had there and preparation. And I appreciate Littleton especially just being so fiscally responsible that we are. Um, but also to keep us updated and keep an eye on, on the involvement of that. Hopefully there is none, but I, I'm just, I just think we should be prepared.
Thank you, Vino. All right, I'm seeing some nodding, nodding heads. Are we good with this one? All right, great. All right, we'll move on to our third presentation, which is uh tiered focused monitoring and integrated monitoring review. Uh, OLA Civil Rights bad director of Student Services Lynn Snow will give a review. On the tiered focused monitoring and integrated monitoring process.
Thank you, Justin. And I actually think you really set the stage for this because I think, you know, our initiatives uh need to be embedded into everything that we do. Um, and you know, Desi loves to change acronyms all the time. We'll talk about this now if they've done, done that many times. And so. To me, I don't care what we call it, it's what we do. And I think this, I hope is um. Being able to shift the focus to a critical aspect of the work that we do. Um, and that's Department of Ed's program review on civil rights, special education and English language learners. We're entering a review cycle in all three of these areas this year into next year. Accountability reviews are such an integral part of um. A district's commitment to equity and they help us assess how effectively we're meeting the needs of all students, especially. Those from historically marginalized groups. They provide us with the opportunity to reflect, adjust and ensure that every student has equal access to the high quality. Education they, they deserve. So um, you know, some of this sometimes gets a little bit boring, but it's. It's exciting work for me because it really does demonstrate or help us to demonstrate how we do what we do. And then show us areas where we need to continue to grow our learning edges that we always expect that we will have, but it helps us kind of drive that. Take that path forward. Um. So Steve, if you could bring up the slides, I will shift us over to that.
Okay. I see the slides. I don't know if anyone else.
Yep, I can.
Yeah, I was gonna say they should be up. Can everybody see them?
Yep, yep. I think you're on my second slide.
Okay. Well.
That's okay. Um, so, oh, okay, there we go. So um. This is surprisingly, well, maybe not surprisingly, my twenty-seventh year in working in public schools in Massachusetts. Desi has revamped the process of district reviews a number of times. Um. You know, I like to think that they just want to keep things exciting and new for us so we don't get bored. Um, so we'll go into, oh, and the strike through is intentional. We are moving away from tiered focused monitoring into targeted and focused monitoring and. An integrated monitoring review process. So I'll talk about that as we go on. So um, you can move to the next slide, please. Thanks, Steve. Um. We'll go over, I'll go over the department's, Department of Ed's Division of Public School Monitoring. And then provide a process overview of the targeted and focused monitoring in the a, areas of English learner education. As well as the process of the integrated monitoring review in the areas of civil rights and special education. Next slide. And I'll also talk about the timeline of, of these processes. So um. The role of PSM. So in Massachusetts, the role of public school monitoring is within a unit of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, DESI. And it involves overseeing the performance and compliance of public schools across the state. So they're responsible for ensuring that schools meet state and federal education standards. Implementing policies, evaluating the effectiveness of educational programs. The monitoring includes conducting assessments, reviewing school reports. Ensuring equitable access to quality education and then providing support for improvement where needed. The goal is to maintain high educational standards and ensure that schools are providing a safe, effective and inclusive learning environment for all students. Next slide. So why IMR and not TFM? DESI made the transition from tiered focused monitoring to integrated monitoring reviews. This was in response to the need to. Fully align with the Office of Special Education Programs, OSAP's. Requirements under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, ID, known as IDEA. So the change aimed to ensure that the state's monitoring processes were more comprehensive. Streamlined and focused on outcomes for all students, particularly those with disabilities. Um. Well, just as a quick aside, this year is going to be IDEA's fiftieth birthday, uh, which is, which is exciting, but it's also important to know it is um. It has been amended and reauthorized, reauth, reauthorized multiple times. Um, but it still, still remains. Um. And so back to talking about how the transition was made. So OSAP creates very clear guidelines as far as how states need to monitor and support the implementation of special education services. DESI's shift to integrated monitoring aim to meet those federal requirements. By aligning monitoring activities related to special education with broader educational and, and accountability systems. So the integration ensures that uh both academic and special education compliance are part of the same review process. That's the integrated piece. In line with OSAP's emphasis on improving results for students with disabilities. So previously, DESI conducted separate monitoring processes for different aspects of school performance, such as student outcomes. Special education services and overall school accountability. The tiered focused monitoring system involved different levels of scrutiny based on a school's performance in specific areas. But with the integrated monitoring views, DESI consolidated these processes and their intention is to eliminate re. Hopefully redundancy in making the overall system more efficient. I'm hopeful and cautiously optimistic and I'll certainly update you once um, we've go through the full cycle and have had the experience with the new integrated monitoring review process. So just as another aside, prior to the tiered focused monitoring, which is previously known as TFM. We had what was called the coordinated program review and we are essentially kind of moving back into uh more of a coordinated review approach. And that combines multiple aspects of school performance and, and other key performance indicators in one cohesive process. So the integrated review process emphasizes the identifications and of strengths and areas for improvement, ensuring that DESI can provide targeted technical assistance to schools. The process, the focus on continuous improvement. Directly supports OSAP's school of increasing outcomes for students with disabilities and promoting um systemic changes that benefit all students. And to better align with their focus on stakeholder engagement, DESI worked to incorporate feedback from various stakeholders, including school leaders, teachers, families, advocacy groups. Into the integrated monitoring process. And this feedback is to help DESI identify priorities and ensure that the monitoring process addresses the needs of all students. Particularly those with disabilities. So just to summarize, the shift from integrated monitoring reviews by DESI, it was a strategic move to streamline the oversight processes. Enhance coordination across educational areas. I'll talk about that in a bit. And then fully comply with OSAP's guidelines for improving outcomes for students with disabilities while ensuring accountability for all students um in Massachusetts schools. You can move to the next slide. So this emphasis reflects um DESI's ongoing commitment to ensuring equitable access to quality education and meeting federal and state mandates. And improving student outcomes in particular key areas. So one highlight of the twenty-five, twenty-six reviews will be looking at MCATs alt. So generally speaking, that means that they're looking to ensure that districts don't have a significantly disproportionate number of students that are placed on the alternative assessment. Another um highlight of the review would be looking at the child find requirement under IDEA, which mandates that school districts identify, locate and evaluate. Children with disabilities who are in need of special education services, including those who are not yet enrolled in school. And so focusing on district child find helps DESI ensure that all students who require special education and related services are identified early. And then also um, another highlight will be the inter, looking at the integration of cross-unit collaboration, particularly between. Problem, the problem resolution system and the Office of Language Acquisition, which I refer to as PRS and OLA. Acronyms, highlighting DESI's commitment to addressing complex issues more, more holistically. PRS is, just to give you a quick snapshot, they're responsible for resolving disputes related to special ed, including um complaints, mediation, anything that's due process. Effective collaboration with PRS ensures that problems related to special ed services, such as those impacting students with disabilities, they're quickly identified and addressed. And then OLA focuses on supporting our English language learners and ensuring that they receive equitable access to educational opportunities. So many English learners also have disabilities, so that cross-unit collaboration helps to ensure that these students receive the appropriate services under both special education. And under English language acquisition frameworks. And so the emphasis on MCATs alt, district child find and cross-root unit collaboration during the twenty-five, twenty-six integrated monitoring reviews. It reflects DESI's focus on ensuring that all students receive appropriate services. And aims to improve, improve educational outcomes, promoting equity and also ensuring compliance with state and federal regulations. You move to the next slide. And so with regard to the process, there's a large scale document um upload related to three special education indicators. To DESI's um new online platform called SHAMP. So um, there'll be a very large document upload related to indicator. Um, eleven, which is a school district's response to a parental request for, for um. For educational evaluation, um, the frequency of reevaluation. And then also looking at progress reports and content. So this year we're group A and so there's a pre-review checklist for special education. Um, Jesse calls it a checklist, but that checklist is a sixty-page-long document that helps guide districts through the pre-review process. Because there's no longer a self-assessment component for special education that has been eliminated. Um, and then there's a student record review that looks at thirty, thirty-one different criterion that are reviewed with regard to the IEP kind of process and compliance. And then there's a, a very large document review where they're looking at thirteen different um criterion. So you can move into the next slide. So the integrated monitoring process, it is inclusive of a discovery phase, an engagement phase, and then a closeout phase. The discovery phase includes data collection and indicator submissions. The engagement phase involves upload and review of our procedural manual and onsite visit, a record review, and then DESI prepares a report. Um, which then is followed by the closeout phase and that incorporates a corrective action plan for any areas of finding that the department um issues. And go to the next slide. Just to give you an idea of how the process unfolds temporally, um, I'll just walk you through the timeline. So. From February to May of, of this school year, we will conduct our civil rights self-assessment because even though there's no self-assessment in the area of special ed, there is still remain. There still is a self-assessment for our civil rights. And then we'll be uploading um our documents for indicators eleven, twelve and thirteen, and that due date is May fifteenth. And then throughout the spring and, and throughout the summer, it's a very busy time because we'll be doing um, the LEA, which is the school district, will be doing our uploads. Um, DESI will be doing data review and then there's ongoing communication. So there's a lot of back and forth where DESI's looking at uploads, they're coming back, they might have comments, they might ask for more, they might say we need X, Y and Z. So it's a very kind of interactive process at that point. And then um, moving into February of twenty twenty-six. They're going to look at our special education policies and procedures. And then they're going to be looking, um, they're going to be doing their review for compliance. And then in March of twenty twenty-six, they'll do an onsite record review, they'll come in, they'll do observation site visits, and then they'll do a whole series of, of interviews. Next slide. And so then that, from there, that's when DESI does their internal review. They work on um produce, drafting and producing the report through. April twenty twenty-six, they will issue the report by May of twenty twenty-six. And then beyond that, for a year's time, there could be a corrective action plan um timeline. And then. If, if there are corrective actions, then there's pro, progress reporting that's associated with that. So that's the whole kind of cycle of, of this review. It's. It's a very um, it's very comprehensive and it's very in-depth. Next slide. So with regard to these three specific indicators, um, it looks at um. Special at eleven looks at school district's response to a parental request for evaluation. And this, this indicator establishes compliance with child find requirements and it ensures that children are evaluated in a timely fashion. Indicator twelve establishes compliance with part C to part B transition requirements is outlined in IDEA. And that means the part C to part B transition refers to the process in um IDEA where a child who has been receiving early intervention services. Under what's called part C, um, for infants and toddlers, birth to age three transitions to the special education services provided under part B of IDEA. So the, it's our, we call it our turning three transition. Um. And so then the transition process is when a child turns two years old in nine months. And so that gives us time for evaluations, planning, coordination to ensure a smooth shift in services because um. We are required to be ready to deliver and serve um students at their, at their third birthday. And then indicator thirteen is related to transition planning and services. And that's um for students aged fourteen to twenty-two. And so those also um ensure that we're conforming to the requirements of state and federal law. And so that's. Indicator thirteen is defined as the percentage of students aged fourteen and bu, above. It's during the, the IEP year where they turn fourteen. Um, that have an IEP and that's when we start to include appropriate measurable annually updated post-secondary goals based on. Um, age-appropriate assessments, transition services that will reasonably, reasonably enable students. To uh meet those post-secondary goals based on their vision. And then evidence that the student was also invited to the IEP team meetings because once they're age fourteen, they become um a member of the IEP team. Um. And that if appropriate, a representative of any participating agency, whether it be um DDS, D um. DMH or um mass rehab. Uh, adult services that they were also invited to participate in these, in these meetings. And so um, that kind of gives the, a little bit of a snapshot of, of those three indicators. So you can move to the next slide. And so for the civil rights component, because group A is focused on identification, IEP development, programming and our support services. There's three document review. there's three document review criteria and items related to civil, civil rights. So the civil rights criterion three, that's related to ensuring equal access to education. This addresses the availability of information and academic counseling about, about both general curricular options and occupational and vocational opportunities for students. And so this criterion is designed to make sure that all students, regardless of background or disability status, have access to information and guidance to make an informed decision about their education and future career paths. And so this means that schools have to provide students with information about various academic subjects with regard to the general curriculum, as well as vocational and career training options. It includes making students aware of the full range of educational opportunities available, including different academic tracks, honors, AP courses, and vocational training programs. For instance, job readiness programs, technical courses. Students need to have access to comprehensive counseling services that help them understand their educational options and how to succeed academically. And that includes counseling that helps students choose courses, plan their academic path, and makes, make decisions that align with their future goals, whether those include future academic pursuits or entering the workforce. And so there is another part that ensures that students are informed about vocational education, career pathways that may be available, such as technical training programs, apprenticeships, and other career-focused options, and not just a college preparatory pathway. And this ensures that students, particularly those interested or needing vocational education, are aware of programs that can prepare them for careers after school and help them gain relevant schools. So just to summarize that, it's about in, criterion three is about ensuring equal access to the important educational information and guidance that helps students make informed decisions about their academic education and career pathways. And so it ensures that no student is left without access to the resources and supports necessary to prepare for life after school, whether through college or direct entry into the workforce. Criterion 14 ensures that counseling services and counseling materials are free from bias and stereotypes. So this criterion is designed to promote fairness and equality in how students are advised and supported in their academic and career planning, and to ensure that all students have an equal opportunity to succeed regardless of their background or identity. So counseling services need to be provided without discrimination based on characteristics such as race, gender, disability, socioeconomic status, or cultural background. Counselors need to offer guidance that's individualized, focusing on a student's interests, strengths, and goals, rather than assumptions based on stereotypes. For instance, assuming a girl won't be interested in science or technology, or that a certain race group is more suited for specific careers. Counseling materials free from bias and stereotypes. So this means our counseling materials could include, which could include like books, handouts, websites, videos, must also be free from bias and stereotypes. For examples, materials shouldn't, shouldn't suggest that certain groups are suited for specific academic or career paths, or that, for, for instance, suggesting that women are only, are, are more well-suited for like teaching or nursing, or that certain ethnic groups are more likely to work in manual labor. Materials should be inclusive and represent a wide range of roles, professions, and achievements that reflect the diversity of the student body. And this is really important, because this promotes equality. It ensures that students are not unfairly steered into certain academic paths. And it encourages diverse opportunities, because by removing bias and stereotypes, students are empowered to explore a full range of academic and vocational opportunities. It supports inclusion, it helps foster an inclusive environment where all students feel respective, respected. So in essence, the civil rights criterion 14 ensures that both the counseling process and the materials used are equitable, inclusive, and free from any form of discrimination. And for, for the criterion 18, the review is going to focus, not exclusively, but will focus on our early literacy screening, whether the school district has procedures demonstrating that at least twice per year, the district assesses reading ability and progress in literacy, literacy skills for all students in kindergarten through at least third grade, using a valid developmentally appropriate screening instrument approved by the department. It looks at whether the procedures ensure that when a student is determined to be significantly below relevant benchmarks for age typical development in specific literacy skills, that the school determines which actions within the general education program will meet the student's needs, including differentiated or supplement, supplementary evidence-based reading instruction, and ongoing monitoring of progress. And it also looks at whether the procedures ensure that when there is a screening result that is significantly below the relevant benchmarks, that the school informs the student's parents and guardian of the screening results, as well as the school's response, and offers them the opportunity for a follow-up discussion. Okay, next slide. So the EL ETFM review process is a targeted focus monitoring review process. And so that, we do have a district self-assessment in that area. And so we'll do a record review and submission, there will be a document review and submission, and we do completion of the Castaneda test, which looks and ensures, it's a three-pronged test that looks at, at our curriculum, ensures that it meets all of the standards. And then OLA does a desk review, which reviews our district and school self-assessments. They review our data specific to student outcomes to, and looks at equal access. They review our student record documents, and they identify different review activities. And so there's a range of onsite or virtual review activities. Because we're a low-incidence district, we will have a, a virtual review. There won't be an onsite review. And then they do also provide a report, and then they disseminate that. And then there is a continuous monitoring, an improvement plan and approval, similar to the special ed and civil rights review process. And then there's progress reports associated with that as well. And go to the next slide. So for the self-assessment, we perform the following activities. We select a sample of student records. It will likely be the majority of our records, given our size. They review each individual student record. We enter individual student results into an online system. And then there's summary responses, and then they, DESI will conduct the EL document review, but we also conduct an EL document review, because it's a self-assessment process. Next slide. The review focus areas are going to look at our English learners, our former, our FELs, which is our former English learners, our opt-outs. Opt-outs are students whose parents have opted them out of the, the program. And then they also look at our translation and interpretation to ensure that we are providing access to all correspondence in a family's home language. And we all, they're also going to be looking at our English learners with disabilities. And so when they review our records, it's just important that the records have a proportional representation across all of the focus areas. Next slide. And so the data for the OLA reviews are going to look at growth in English language acquisition, the number and percentage of English learners who are making progress towards achieving their English, their English learner proficiency. And so that, and that looks at exit criteria, support, monitoring. And this helps educators track the progress of students who have transitioned out of the program. They'll also look at additional indicators, so they'll look at our FEL and ever FEL performance on MCAS as compared to non-L performance on MCAS. And they're doing that to look at disproportionality, to just ensure that there's, that there's not a discrepancy between, they're going to look at dropout rate, graduation rate for our English learners, and the proportion of identification of English learners for special ed. So they want to ensure that, that the right number of English learners are identified with disabilities, and that there's not a significant disproportion, disproportionality there. But also on the flip side, making sure that we're not inadvertently over-identifying a second language learner need as a disability. And then they also look at suspension rates. Are, are English learners more likely to be suspended than non-English learners? Next slide. And so that takes us through the journey of compliance and accountability reviews in the areas of special education, civil rights, and Office of Language Acquisition.
Thank you very much, Ms. Snow. Questions or comments? Everyone's just blown away. Oh, Elaine has her hand up. Okay. Thanks, Elaine.
It's nice having the, the hand function, so I don't feel like I'm just butting in. But thank you for that really comprehensive explanation. I'm so grateful that we have you in our district, Lynn, with your mastery of the ins and outs of this process. It, it sounds like you've got a lot of work on your plate coming up, going through this, this whole process. So I'm, uh, thank you in advance for what you're about to go through.
How often?
It's a team effort. Everybody is involved.
How, how often does this come up? Does every district fall into a cycle with these evaluations?
These reviews?
Three-year cycles.
So this is, so our, so our, our onsite year is technically 2526. And so this is like the preparation, but this is document upload, that civil rights self-assessment piece, the pre-review, so that's this year, next year will be our onsite. And then the third year of that cycle is if there's, you know, if there's corrective actions or there's a plan, that's the progress reporting phase.
Do you, I'm just curious, with all of this information that you need to pull together for DESI, do you feel that there's a beneficial aspect to you in the district in?
Having me in the district? I hope so.
No, 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 no. I mean, this process. Oh, of course, there's, no, the, the process of going through this review, like, do you find that there's, I mean, is this, does this feel like just reporting to you? Or do you feel like there are beneficial aspects to, you know, things that you learn about the district?
So I've been through coordinated program review process. I've been through tiered focus monitoring. This will be, you know, everybody's first go as an integrated monitoring review, which from my experience seems more commensurate with the coordinated program review. The integrated, the, I mean, the tiered focus monitoring, our last cycle, it's an, it's an iterative process, for sure. There's back and forth, it's a supportive process. I believe the same to be true going forward. It's, it is, you know, it is a lot of work. There are, depends on when you ask me, there's certainly times where you're like, I'm just uploading like hundreds of documents. Are they reading them? Are they, you know? But to me, I'm, I'm a big fan of compliance and accountability. I think that it's important for us to be self-assessing. I think it's important for us to be reviewing our policies and procedures and, and ensure that we're living them, and that they're not just, you know, static documents that are on a website. And the, the, the review process helps ensure that by showing evidence to, to show how we're living these, these policies and regulations that we, that all districts have.
Great. Thank you.
Kelly?
Thank you, Justin. I actually used the raised hand. Awesome. Elaine, I'm glad you said that, because there is some merit having somebody come in and, and look at your process, your record-keeping, your documentation. As we all know, IEP is, IEPs within a district are, are complex at times, and, and the record-keeping and, and retrieval of data is, is so important. So when they come in and, and just pull files, it's, it's a good way to, to test our skills in terms of making sure that, that everything is in compliance. And the reflective component of it is, is huge. But I have to say, all, all these additional expectations and accountability come without added staff. And when we're, we're spending a lot of time in that domain, because there's something every year, it does at times take away our ability to be more visible within, within the district and the schools. And there's no easy answer to it. I mean, it's, we, we can't just go out and start hiring staff, because, you know, we need staff to upload data and on and on and on. We try to make sure that if we're going to spend money, the money we spend is going to touch the classroom. And our focus is to make sure that we improve opportunities for students. And perhaps sometimes we, we need to review that, and, and, and we'll see how this goes. There may be a, there may come a point in time where we do need additional help. I know Lynn has the, the ability and has taken, taken that offer up to bring somebody in to help her upload data, et cetera. We are fortunate to have a retired superintendent who was also a school committee chair for many years. She's retired now and, and, you know, likes to keep busy every now and again. So she's been a huge help in some of these reviews with us.
Oh, you muted. Justin, I think you're muted.
You couldn't read my lips?
That was a funny face. You just started crying. You were like, huh?
We almost got through the meeting without somebody doing that. I was saying, another example of the many hats that you wear within the district, so thank you for all the hard work that you do.
For sure. It's, it's definitely a learning process. We, we learn a lot. But we're also doing self-audits continually, because we know these, these reviews are coming. So, you know, the goal is for us to be well-positioned for them. They're time-consuming, but the hope is that if we're always going through cycles of, of self-review, self-assessment, self-reflection, then we're in a better position and we're, we're more, we're more ready for those big cumbersome, time-consuming document uploads, because, you know, we know what's coming. We're prepared.
Perfect. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to our fourth presentation for the evening, which I bet you is going to be a quick one. Financial update, business manager Steve Mark will provide an update. Says five minutes, but I bet you the over-under is two.
But take your time.
There we go. I was muted. Sorry about that. So good evening, everyone. Financial report is in your packet, it's on the screen. I'll start with this. There's, there's no major areas of concern at this point in time. We have a couple of areas that I'll talk about, a couple of minor things that when you put them together kind of add up, but there's no major concerns at this point in time budget-wise. We, we do have some areas of interest that we're keeping an eye on. Our natural gas utility bills are more than we anticipated at this point in time for a couple of factors. We've had some very unusually below zero cold nights that we've been dealing with. That's part of, one of the items that we can't control. That in combination with the national, national grid, national grid has put some price increases in on the supply side of things. You probably noticed in your own home, natural gas bills, that those prices have significantly gone up. We're experiencing the same thing in the schools. So we're keeping an eye on it. Again, we're not overly concerned at this point in time budget-wise, but it is an area that we're keeping an eye on. We've also had some equipment failures in some of the, in some of the kitchens. We had an equipment failure at the Shaker Lane School, and, and some, an equipment failure at the middle school. The Shaker Lane one, we repaired it at this point in time, we're watching it. We don't want to make a major investment into a piece of equipment at the Shaker Lane School at this point in time. We believe the repair is going to get us through for a couple of years. But we're watching that. The middle school, we had a major piece of kitchen equipment fail about a month ago. We've been analyzing and determining what's the best route for that. And that's still kind of in process. We're going to make a decision next week and, and move forward on that. But those were the, the Shaker Lane was the dishwasher. To replace that dishwasher was about $40,000. To repair it was, I think around seven. So we opted to repair it, and the technician says it should be good for a couple more years. So we're hoping that'll last through whatever the new building project is. So that, so that's an area of concern. Again, all of these, all of these individually are, are, are small issues, but when, when you put them together, they can add up. Roads all, or sidewalks all, honestly, we're having a hard time getting it. It's all been kind of sucked up from the south and all the storms they've had. And so when we can get it, the prices are up. If we can get it, sometimes we're limited on how much we can buy at a time. So we're, we're seeking alternate sources, supply sources on that, and, and searching for lower prices on that too. But um, believe it or not, the price of eggs is way up. You've seen at home. So our kitchen staff and Leah Botco is is constantly doing their best to keep the prices down for the supplies that they need to to buy. But we got quoted a price for eggs the other day, fifteen dozen eggs for three hundred dollars. Yes, that's twenty dollars a dozen. So Leah Botco is is making menu adjustments around some of those increased prices for supply and demand and things like that. So again, it there are areas of interest and concern. We're not concerned financially really in the budget at this point in time, but those are are areas that we're keeping an eye on. So I know they seem, again, kind of minor when you take them individually, but when you put them all together, it can be some significant dollars that we have to make up within our budget this year. So that's all I have for tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve? Steve, could you just touch on the capital projects that we looked to take care of this year? And if what's still outstanding or are they all wrapped up?
Uh, so we have a number of capital projects that we're planning this summer. There are three rooftop units at the high school that were went out to bid on. Their units are being ordered. Those are scheduled to be installed by the contractor over the summer as soon as school gets out. We're looking to replace and we're working now with the engineer on the bid documents. But we're looking to replace three units, three rooftop units at the middle school. These are units that provide air conditioning and heating in certain areas. And then there's two units that provide heat for the gymnasium, the middle school gymnasium and the locker rooms. Those are, there's two units there. They're redundant to each other. They're both original to the building, require quite a bit of maintenance lately. So we're going to try to replace one of them this summer. We're doing some sidewalk repairs at the Russell Street School. We are doing some flooring replacement at the high school. The the main hallway at the high school, we're going to take up and replace the VCT tiles. They're showing their age and deteriorating and things like that. So that needs to be done. So those are the biggest projects. We have some little minor things we're doing as well, some screen replacement at the Russell Street School. A couple of doors need to be replaced and adjusted. But those are the the big projects that we're dealing with.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Can I just ask for clarification? Do you say twenty dollars a dozen?
That's what we got quoted for price, twenty dollars a dozen for eggs. Yes, that's.
But don't we get like federal, like doesn't this, don't the schools get like some type of nothing? Twenty dollars a dozen?
Yeah, we 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 decline. We're not, we didn't do it, but that's the 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 price of eggs has gone ridiculous, as everybody knows, so.
I just wanted to make sure I heard that.
Yeah, you heard correctly. I questioned that too, but that's, yeah, we declined that. We declined to place that order, so we're looking elsewhere. So, all right, thank you. I know it's crazy, isn't it?
Yeah, it is crazy. I saw the the lettuce, the hydroponic lettuce experiment. Maybe we need to become chicken farmers as well. Make a couple bucks.
Or just go vegan.
Not going up with that, but we have plenty of fields that probably need some some picking.
All right, we've got one order of old business here, so including everyone's packet tonight, the financial policies working group discussion. I've been asked to pick this topic up again to get us to move forward with it, potential motion this evening to accept. In the packet, I just want to clarify or ask for clarification. Looks like there's two copies in here. I think maybe the first copy was some suggested edits to the document and potentially some edits that came resulted from the conversation we had the first time. And then is the second copy, the clean copy that was presented to us?
Yes.
Okay. So if you folks remember, we visited this topic, I don't know, four or five meetings ago. There was a financial policies working group formed that did some work over the summer. I was a school committee representative. It was a ten thousand foot view as to how town finances should operate. The idea there is boards change over, people come and go. This document should live with the town and and be updated as needed. But it's a great place for select board members, finance committee members, school committee members to start so they get an understanding of how the town's looking to use our resources. There were a couple of areas in particular that were school committee, school department focused. And I wanted, you know, revisit them, shed some more light on them. Janine and I have essentially, along with the help of Kelly and Steve, of course, lived this document as we've gone through the budgetary cycle. And we've had a lot of conversations with finance committee members, select board members, and formally presented our budgetary ask for twenty five, twenty six fiscal year. So my hope is that we can talk through this this evening. And my my true intention is to talk through the changes that were discussed and actually hopefully receive a motion on the clean version that was presented to us from the financial policies working group. If we feel strongly that we need to make an edit, we can vote that through this evening. And then it'll have to go back to the select board and finance committee for them to then approve the document with our edit as well. And and then all three boards will be in unison as to how this should work. But I'm kind of taking this from the top.
Justin, if you want, he's on the screen.
Only take a few minutes, I hope. Yeah, why don't you throw up the, why don't you start with the edited version? So page one of this. If you see, okay, there we go. All right. Shows up kind of small. And I'm literally trying to move it with my finger on my screen, but it's your screen. So the section twenty five in particular relates to the school department. The first paragraph basically is stating that we're a large portion of the budget. It's imperative that we maintain a close working relationship with the select board and finance committee. There were no edits there. I think everybody's in agreement. The second paragraph here is the school department shall follow the budgetary guidelines as outlined in the annual budgetary message or budget message. We added, to the extent such guidelines are not in conflict with applicable law or school committee policy, budget timelines and current practices. I will say that that is a that's an assumption on behalf of the select board and finance committee as well. So that one, that is an implied, that's implied within that statement. They're, what they're asking us to do is when they formulate, when we formulate our budget, we should do so with the understanding of where town finances are. And of course, they want us or they need us to comply with certainly state law and timelines that relates to Desi and all that stuff. We've gone ahead and amended our budget presentation for the select board and finance committee already as presented at the joint meeting to include the data as as written here in this document. So we presented prior years budgeted numbers versus actual and then showed the budgeted current year and what our budget is for the following year. We added the word town finance director again, I believe, I think that's also implied. We, the the third, the last paragraph on this page applies to revolving funds, which was also part of the presentation. So not only are we to think about, disclose, discuss the appropriate, the appropriated funds, but in in order, you know, to provide transparency. During that presentation, we should disclose the levels of our revolving funds, the historical use of the revolving funds and the anticipated balances. So there were no issues with that. If we flip to the next page, there's a section here on school choice, which all of the school committee members are pretty familiar with. We have school choice seats. We're a school choice district. We collect revenue from the students that choose to participate in our school district. We've worked hard at maintaining those seats and offering them. And we are the beneficiary of students coming into the district. School choice funds are there for a reason. They're predominantly there to help offset extraordinary expenses that might arise due to out of district spends or special needs cases. The, we're all in agreement that we should carry at least a minimum five percent balance of our budget within school choice and that the target budget should there should be about ten percent. So there were no, no changes there. There's some language there about instances and one time spends, which there wasn't any issue. Prepayment of expenses, I can add some clarification here in speaking with the finance committee. So one of the expenses that we are legally allowed to prepay for is, there's a wording in here. It just says certain cost, but it's is it specifically out of districts tuition or is it special education cost, Steve?
It's special education, out of district tuition.
Okay, both of them or one and the same. So that they felt like we've, in the event that we are able to, we have, it puts us in a better, better shape financially for the following year because it gives us a little bit of a cushion. The point that they're trying to make here is don't not spend them like it. Once you start that pattern, the fear from the town side was don't take a year off and then fold that money into your operating budget. Like, don't spend it elsewhere. And I and I kind of looked at them a bit surprised that they would think that that was something that we would entertain because that automatically inflates our budget without notifying anybody. And I was like, no, no, no. Like, if we were ever in a situation where we felt like we were tight, we just wouldn't prepay. And then we would pay the following year out of those dedicated dollars. And they were like, oh, our fear was that you were actually gonna use that money elsewhere. So having talked that through, I don't have any concerns about the language as it was initially presented to us because I understand the context of it now and they understand our context. The big hot button here, I think, was the chapter seventy funds. And Janine, you can certainly hop in on this as well. And I try to think of a couple of analogies here and hopefully they don't bomb. But the way that we present our budget to the town is we ask for total dollars to achieve all of the programming and the success that we we wish to have for the following year. And the town signs off on that. There are a number of funding sources that are going to help us achieve our goals. And it's not going to add up to the total amount of dollars that we need. So then the town says, okay, we'll fund you at a, you know, but for example, we'll fund you at a hundred percent of what you're asking for. So the town's making up the difference. And in the event that when all of the money ultimately comes in, if extra money comes in, there was a thought that it's school money, so the school should receive the money. But the town is saying that, well, wait a minute, we already agreed to fund you at, like, we all came to an agreement that we're going to fund you at this level. Yes, the money came in for schools, but we needed to make a conserve, we needed to make a conservative estimate here. We couldn't have it be the other way where we used, we picked a number for our chapter seventy funds and we were shorted that money because then we would have to run back to the town and ask for additional money to pay all of our bills. So we try to do our best with what we think this is, where this money is going to be. But it's better to be conservative and get a little bit, get a nice surprise versus not have enough money. So the analogy here that I came up with is like trying to pay for college tuition freshman year. You and your parents decide where you're going to go. It comes with a big price tag and if there's eight or scholarships or offsets or whatever, and your parents say, okay, we'll pick up the difference or we'll pick up the difference through loans or however the case may be. And you go to the verser's office with your check that that you may have borrowed money for, who knows? And and the verser says, oh, good news, like, there's actually extra financial aid and they cut a check back to you. Or they say, do you want, do you wish to upgrade your meal plan? Or do you wish to upgrade your housing? Or do you wish to take an extra course or pay for additional tutoring? No, you you basically bring that check back to your parents and say, it actually costs a little bit less than we thought. And the good news is I received more aid than we intended, so it's costing us less. Or you send your kid in for to pick up the takeout food and you give him forty bucks and you ask for the change back. That, you know, your child doesn't just keep the change. So the town's basically saying, here, look, we're gonna, when we agree to fund you at X level, in the event that there's a little bit of money left over, it needs to come back to the town because the town, the town is not always going to give us exactly what we want. But at the end of the day, we're all going to be at the table and we're all going to say, okay, this is what we have to live live with. And we can't just keep the extra money. In the rare event that the extra money is substantial, I mean, a couple of times, more often than not, it's pretty close to what we budgeted or it's not worth fighting over. But that's the town stance. As a school committee member, I'm in agreement with the town's stance as a member of the financial policy working group. Certainly wish to open that up for discussion. I'll go through these last, these last couple of paragraphs don't have any edits, but that was this, that was the sticky point for us. I believe there was a where the money was, you know, it seemed substantial a couple of years ago. And whether it's substantial or not substantial, the town's agreeing to fund us at a level that we feel is accomplishes our goals. And we've got to, we've got, we've all got to get on the same page somehow. So Janine's got her hand up.
So I I thought that, I'll tell you why I took a deep breath and was okay. I mean, because I, you know, I'm still a little not super clear and not completely content with there has have been funds that the state has designated for schools. They've come into Littleton and the town seems to think that's theirs. And that was, that's a discussion we're still having. But what what is calming me down is the town is also talking to us about the capital expenditures we're going, we are going to need both in the fairly near future and in the and then in, in, you know, and then when with building the school. So, you know, like, it, while while it sounds, it it kind of irks me like, you know, like, if someone has a grant for schools that the town is going this, however, when we are going to the town and asking for several million, for millions of dollars for new rubes for the schools and saying, we can't come up with that money our own, on our own in our school budget, which is legitimate and and and, you know, like, how could we? We actually have really an operating budget here going on. So we do need to cooperate with the town to raise the money for our our capital funds. And I kind of feel like this language and what's going on with, you know, being cooperative with with the funds that are coming into the town. What comes to the schools? When we need it, it comes to the schools. If we don't need it, it goes to the town because we know the town is going to help us out with our new roofs. We're going to have a conversation about the schools and we're going to get support and we're going to work with the town on building new schools. So that's where I actually felt justification and and I felt like this was a working relationship. But I kind of wanted to put it out there because if we don't get cooperation with our capital, with our capital budgets, should we talk about this some more? So maybe we can just like revisit that later. But right now, the town is very, very open to working with us. talk about this some more? So maybe we can just like revisit that later. But right now, the town is very, very open to working with us. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Made sense to me, Janine. Thank you for sharing. I'll fill in a couple more details here. I see Elaine's got her hand up. You know, I think historically, the school committee has worked closely with the town administrator's office, the finance director's office, the select board, and the finance committee. I believe there's been a greater emphasis on that, um, due to the Shaker Lane building, um, and the huge need for capital associated with that project. If chapter 70 money comes in, in the, you know, in the near future, the Shaker Lane's like the biggest project Littleton's ever seen, and the idea is to try to get some free cash to fall to the bottom line, so ultimately we can borrow less money as a town. But fast forward 10 years, I mean, that might buy a fire truck, or a police car, or provide renovations to another building in town. This is also a document that is not going to get, you know, bookshelves and become letter of the law, like, this is something that can be revisited and reopened. Um, the suggested language was essentially that if chapter 70 money comes in, in excess of anticipation, that the school department will be notified, and then the school committee would have an opportunity to discuss those funds with the select board. And while that all seems good and dandy, what ends up happening there is extra money comes in, we make a case for it. We say it's, you know, we're supposed to fund the schools, and it's for the kids, and, um, it's like, how, how do you, how do you deny that? The school, the, uh, select board didn't want to be in a, put in a position to have to say no to the schools after they had already said yes, like, we have, we're, we're unanimous, you know, hopefully unanimous support of your budget, and then, oh, extra money comes in, and you want to spend that, that elsewhere, when the town has a, a number of needs as well. So, um, Elaine, you have your hand up, and we'll talk, then we'll visit with Stacy.
Yeah, I'm, I, I think the, this problem originates because the money is delayed, right? So we, we need to budget it and spend it before we know how much it's going to be. And so then the town is sort of backfilling us.
Correct.
And, and approving a budget for the school before they really know how much chapter 70 money is gonna come in, but they're saying, whatever it is, we got you, right?
Correct.
And, um, but what about the scenario when we have a belt tightening year, and we're asked to really cut back on what we think we need to run an effective school system? And we do the belt tightening, and we cut our budget to a point where we're beyond the level where we think we need to be, but we're making sacrifices. And then all of a sudden, a bunch of chapter 70 money comes in. Do we then, we, but we don't then get an opportunity to say, hey, but, you know, we cut all this stuff, can we have that money now? It's, um, you know, what would, so what would the outcome be in a scenario like that?
So we could always revisit this topic. Um, if we were, and I said this, I think I said this at one of the finance committees, or, um, maybe it was the joint meeting. Um, I said, I talked about our budgetary process, and we were coming in and all that good stuff, and, you know, heads were nodding, and we're all in agreement, working together. And I said, you know, let me be very clear, like, we, the school department, school committee would have a very different stance on this if we felt like we were significantly underfunded. Or if year after year, we were coming in with, you know, 8% or 10% increases to try to get to the funding level needed to have a successful school system, and we're always getting beaten down. Um, that's not the case, in my opinion, is that, um, the amount of money that the schools receive from the town allows us to accomplish and provide a great education with the top performing districts in the state. Um, and yes, staff has a tremendous amount to do with that, but you need money to have good staff, and you need money to have good programming and all, and all that good stuff. So Elaine, your question is a valid one, you know, in the event that, um, a couple of years down the road, we're not getting the funding that we receive, or we feel that perhaps there's intentional underbudgeting for some of these variable, uh, revenues sources. Um, we could always revisit this. I mean, we could always approach them to say, hey, look, we asked for a, you know, nominal 3% uh, increase to our budget, and you folks told us, we're only able to approve a, a 3% cut. Um, and then all of a sudden, we find out that extra money comes in, or they change the state funding calculation in the 11th hour. We can always approach them, just, just by saying yes to this today, doesn't mean that we lose that opportunity. We get a chance to talk about our budget every year, and what our needs are, and what the town finances are. Those conversations take place all year long.
So I guess what I'm wondering then, like, what, you know, if that's the case, that we can revisit this, this can be flexible, why are they opposed to putting that language in, saying we would like for it to be flexible?
Because it's likely that nearly every year, the amount budgeted is not going to match the actual. So in the event that we budget a million bucks for this line item, and it's a million dollars, 15,000, they don't want us knocking on the door every year for the 15,000 dollars. It's, it's, it's very likely that every year, there's going to be a discrepancy. And they don't want to put it into practice, that every year they notify us to say, I mean, they don't need to notify us. The information, I believe, is public. Like, once it comes in, we can see it in the reporting. But they just didn't want to put into practice that, like, put the burden on them. Oh, we budgeted this amount for chapter 70. It was actually this. We'd like to put you on the agenda here for you to make your case as to where this extra money should go. That's, that doesn't work for them. Because then they're actually promising twice. They're, they're promising, they're funding us at a level that we've all agreed is fine, and then they're setting themselves up to say, if anything extra comes in here, it's just for the schools. When they backfilled, as somebody said earlier, they backfilled our budget for us. Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, I guess the part that is still concerns me is, you know, you articulated their concern that if there was a discussion about the school wanted X number of dollars out of the chapter 70 money, that they were worried our, our argument would be more compelling, because we're talking about kids. You know, it, it, um, I just wish, I wish that the language could, it sounds like there's not a lot of trust built into the language. That's what concerns me, that there's not, yeah.
I think there's a, I think there's a high level of trust and transparency among the three boards. The, the way that we propose it is almost like we get our cake and eat it too. So it's, you're going to fund us, not, not that you're going to fund us, but we've agreed on a certain funding level, and hey, if extra money comes in, it's for the schools. So we're like, win-win, because we got what I want, we got what we wanted. And then we're like, okay, we'll backburner this additional thing that we wish to pay for, and if and when the money comes in, we'll put that into place. Um, and that, that amount could change every year. So if we put a reoccurring expense into the budget with money that came in one year, and it's not there the following year, what do we do? Cut the program, ask the town for more money the next year? So, you know, it's common practice, the chapter 70 funds, when they come in, we can all look them up. Um, Steve, Kelly, like, they have the ability to find out what that was. We should certainly make that part of the budgetary process, so that when we're planning the following year, we're looking at historical data, so we have an anticipation, we have an anticipated amount as to what it could be for the, for the next year. And we have a sense for what, how much we're asking the town to backfill. It's, it's almost like, for me, the language as presented works. The changes that we were asking kind of puts them in the hot seat.
Okay.
Steve, you had your hand up before?
Um, I think you answered the question. I was just gonna reiterate the fact that, um, the town, the Littleton Public Schools, and the town of Littleton, the town of Littleton funds the Littleton Public Schools way in excess of the required net school spending that the state requires us to spend. So, there's a formula out there in chapter 70 that says Littleton Public Schools has to spend X number of dollars on education every year. The town of Littleton funds the schools well in excess of what that net requirement is. And so, any additional chapter 70 money, while it's fairly negligible, is not gonna have that big of an impact, really, on what that budget is. Historically, that's what's happened. With the exception of Student Opportunity Act funding, that's a different conversation. But typically, typically, chapter 70 funding goes up by a relatively small amount, and it's, over the, over the years, it, it might have increased by 15,000 or 20,000 dollars for the year over what the town anticipated, um, receipts for chapter 70 being. So, we're not talking hundreds of, typically, again, with the exception of the Student Opportunity Act funding, typically, we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars here. We're talking a minimal amount of funding that might be available to come back to the school department. And we have in years gone back and asked the town for, for some of that money. If it was a budget year, we had, where we had to cut something out of our budget request, and the chapter 70 money came in higher, we have had years where we've gone back, requested that chapters, additional chapter 70 money, and the town goes and amends our budget at fall time meeting, and increases our appropriated budget for that amount. So there is some history where that's happened.
And I'll just add one thing, there's a couple of hands up, but I just wanted to, to make the point that the language we were, that we proposed was, in the event, um, that chapter fund, uh, chapter 70 funds are received in excess of the amount placed. If we were to ask for this, the rebuttal would be, well, what if the funds are less than, than anticipated? So then the select board would be looking to come to a school committee meeting and asking us to write a check back to them. So, while this language worked well for us, in reality, it, it, um, we would then be sort of accepting some of the liability in the event that we, um, we had underbudgeted for chapter 70 funds, that what if, what if we were wrong in the negative? So by not talking about it, and, uh, by not specifying the, the, uh, amounts in excess, we're basically saying, when the town approves our budget, we get to, we get to use the budget as, as presented, and we're gonna do all these wonderful things. And if the chapter 70 funds are less, the town's on, on the hook. They're gonna, we're gonna receive our funding.
Uh, thanks, Justin. I, I agree with, with what you're saying, Justin. The the language is written was, was really a, a result of the SOA funding that, that wasn't transparent at the state level. Uh, that, that's, train, this train is gone, and, uh, the chapter 70 funding is stabilized again, and we're not getting that much more a year. And, and you have a very valid point. Would there be an occasion that maybe we budgeted, uh, too much for chapter 70? We've been very conservative. I, I don't remember that happening in the 14 years that I've been here. But we really have developed a good, and we obviously had a good relationship with, with the other two boards. And, and my comfort level is, is, uh, has certainly, continues to increase, and, and when we established the school building revolving fund, the town has come to the plate already, and contributed money to that fund to, uh, help with the Shaker Lane project. So, th- this document is something that's not written in stone. It can be revised if there are issues, and, and they have, they haven't acknowledged that, uh, uh, you know, in your discussions and my discussions with Steve Vannity. So, I think we're at a different time than when we, we inserted that clause. So I, I feel comfortable with, with, you know, moving forward without it.
Okay. Stacy?
Muted. Stacy, you're muted?
Never mind.
There you are.
Um, so I have one question. So Steve had mentioned, so I don't know what, what amount of money we're talking about here. Steve had mentioned it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars, but is it tens of thousands of dollars? Is this salaries for teachers that we could have at our, like, in the district? Like, what, what's the amount of money that we're talking about here that?
Steve, do you know the most recent example? Chapter 70 versus?
I, I, I don't know the recent, the most recent data, but typically, it hasn't been more than 10,000 to 12,000 dollars. It's not like we're funding, a- again, with the exception of the Student Opportunity Act money. Typically, the, the town does a good job estimating what chapter 70 receipts are gonna be, and then the state legislature and the governor adjust those in the final state budget process. And typically, I think the most we've ever seen that increase additional chapter money come in, if I recall, it's about 15,000 dollars. It's not like it's, it's not like it's 80, 90, 100,000 dollars, it's gonna fund a position. It's a relatively small amount.
Okay, that's, that, that was just an important thing for me to like, just kind of understand, like, the scale of which we're talking about, like?
Yeah, it, it's not as significant. And, and don't get me wrong, 15,000 dollars is a lot of money, and we can do a lot of things with, you know, you can buy materials and things like that, but it's, it's not significant where it's gonna make a position in funding a position or not funding a position typically.
Okay, all right.
Do you know what the, um, what the typical SOA funding would be? Because that, that last conference I went to at the a conference in November that Justin and I went to, they said that SOA was a new name for chapter 70, that it was all one and the same. So if you're thinking of it as two different things, like, what, what would the typical amount of the SOA money be?
Uh, the SOA money was, what, Kelly, a couple of hundred thousand dollars, if I recall?
Yes, it was.
And that program, I think, has ended, so.
It, it will be ending, uh, I think, next year. So, I guess to, to piggyback on Steve, for, for many, many years, the, the increase in, in chapter 70 funding with what we budgeted was, was 15,000 or less. When the SOA funding came out, I think that's where the confusion arrived, and, and we're getting, you know, a couple hundred thousand more, without really knowing it, uh, at that, and, and it finally, we, we discovered it when we were looking at, at the chapter 70 funding. Again, it was the state law that decided to blend it rather than target it, and, and that created a, a lot of confusion for a while. But we were, we were able to meet the SOA, uh, demands, for lack of a better word, with the money that we had. So, because we fill out, we fill out a report every year, uh, and, uh, we have to show how we're fulfilling the SOA requirements with the funding that we have, and we're able to do that without additional funding. So, we're, we're fine with that. And, and again, I don't know what the future's gonna bring, but I certainly, in the near future, don't anticipate any huge injections of, of chapter 70 money. But I think we're fine for, for a while. And as I said, we can, we can revisit it at a later date. The, the net school funding, I just wanted to make a comment about that, because I've dealt with net school funding for many years. The net school funding number is derived simply with the amount of money they have at the state level to divvy up to school districts. It has nothing to do with the money needed to, uh, run a successful school district. So to be over net school funding is, is, it's natural. It's not something that's special. And I just wanted to, to add that to, to the conversation.
But there are some urban districts. Um, I reviewed that list. There are some, and I don't want to say just urban, but there are some districts that fund their school department just at that level. I mean, it's common for, it's common for some districts that are overachievers, um, not overachievers, that, I don't know, I don't know how, you know, that, uh, place a greater emphasis on education, where they fund well in excess of 100, Littleton being one of them. But there certainly are some municipalities where they might be having financial struggles, or there's less emphasis on, um, the education, and they, they do simply just fund at 100. So, one of, it's, you know, it's probably one of the reasons why we all live here, is, uh, the school system. So.
And those districts are often districts that are high percentage receivers of chapter 70 funds.
Correct. Yes, they are. So, um, the easiest thing to do here is, um, you know, Pat, Stacy, your hands up again. you know, Pat, uh, Stacy, your hands up again?
Uh, yeah, well, yes, I think I just, just, just so I have a total understanding or just uh, maybe naming the concern is that we want to make sure that if funding is coming in for the school, just for the school, that, that funding is going towards the school without having to maybe have to negotiate it back from the town. So transparency is needed in regards to like how much the town is actually getting specifically for the school. Is that, do I have that right? Regardless of the number, it's just, it's more transparency of like, how much is Littleton getting to support the school regardless of where it is in the piggy bank?
Yeah, correct. So it's all, it's all in open finance or munis. I, I mean, maybe it's not munis, but I think through open finance that the number is available. Steve, is that right?
Yes, open finance with the town, um, budgeted numbers are in there. You can also go to um, D E S I um, and look at chapter seventy funding uh, formulas uh, town by town on the.
So no one's hiding, the money's not, the money's not hidden, right?
Steve, add that to like our budget, whatever budget line that we're looking at, can, can you? I mean, obviously no one's been like, no one's going into D E S I to like, search for this information, but can somehow can we have that as a line item in our budget or somewhere that is seen by the school committee to understand or to know the fluidity of that budget that's coming into the town, just so that we, we have a number there. I think that transparency is helpful to know.
It's in the town, it's in the town budget number.
Okay.
Yeah. So logistically, the way that this works is we have our budget and we ask the town to fund our budget. And then the town thinks about how are we going to pay for this? And they pay for this through various sources, state money and then local money. And if we were to say, hey, in the event that state money comes in in excess of budgeted, we would then need to be like negotiating how the town's going to pay for this. We're in the position right now where we ask for our budget. They approve it and then the burden is on them to get it funded. If we were to try to move forward with language because we wanted to get involved in the funding sources and keep the extra money, now we've got to try to negotiate with them how they're paying for it. Um, and we got to try to negotiate what that number might be. So we're, right now, we're the beneficiaries of saying, hey, in the, you know, th- this is what we got, let's go. And, and they have to worry about it.
Yeah.
But, but if we were to start to kill the onion back, um, we, there's, there's more to lose here than there is to gain. So the easiest path, path forward here um, would be to think about the document that was shared. Uh, it's the clean version that was presented to us. We, I talked through the redlining. Um, in my opinion, I don't believe that any of the edits are, are actually necessary. We spent a ton of time talking about chapter seventy. So we're all pretty clear on that. But the un, other redlining um, was mostly implied language. It would simply just cause them to go back and revisit this topic again. Um, I guess I'll ask for a motion to accept the financial policies working document um, as presented without the, without the red lines.
Should we talk about the graduation requirement section? That's a lot to read on it.
Um.
Is that part of the document we're voting on?
That's not part of the document that we're voting on. That's, that's policy. We're going to get there next.
Oh, okay. That was a fake out because it looked very similar to the one we're voting on.
No, so this is a two-page document.
Okay.
Um, there's a redline version, which was our edits or our discussion. And then there's a clean copy. The clean copy is the copy that's, that's been accepted by the select board and the finance committee already. Um, I've asked for a motion. I haven't heard one yet. I'll pause a little longer.
Um, I move we accept the financial policy as, as presented tonight.
Motion made by Janine. I just want to clarify that I presented the redline document and talked through the edits, but um, is it my understanding that you're motioning to approve the version that was um, approved by the select board and the finance committee?
That was your recommend, is your recommendation to not, not to approve it slightly different than the way it? Did you say without the red lines?
Correct. I'm not trying to force the, a motion one way or another. We'll do this as a group.
Yep.
The, what I was trying to do here was explain, um, explain the red lines and uh, add some background as to why I feel that they might not be necessary because it's some of it's implied language and then the whole chapter seventy conversation. And the easiest path forward here for the town, select board and finance committee would be for us to approve the clean version, which is the second version in the packet, because that is the version the select board and the finance committee has already approved. If as a committee here, we want to approve something other than that, such as the copy with the red lines or another edit, that's fine. We will then need to notify the select board and the finance committee that we approved something other than what they approved. And they will need to work with their board to try to get our language approved. So I just wanted to ask if wanted to offer that and just wanted to make sure I understood your motion.
Um, I, I am comfortable making a motion to accept the policy as it was presented to us um, from the select board and finance committee and therefore be in compliance with the other boards in the town. I am open, absolutely. Obviously, we should have conversation if there's other thoughts.
Okay, that's, that's clear to me. Some motion made by Janine. Is there a second?
I second that.
Seconded by Beano. Is there any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for roll call vote. Janine?
Janine Wood, yes.
Beano?
Beano Patel, yes.
Stacy?
Got it, yes.
Elaine?
Elaine Sandman, yes.
Justin McCarthy votes yes as well. Thank you very much for that discussion and for that vote. That carries a five oh. All right. So we will now pause for our second opportunity for interested citizens. I don't know if anybody's still hanging with us.
None.
I do know. Sorry.
No, that's.
Just trying to pull it up on the thing.
Right, you know, why watch us live when you can watch us on tape? Um, we'll roll through our subcommittee reports, P N B C.
Um, I will, I'll just get right into Shaker Lane and be as quick as possible, but I know Kelly probably can always like add more, more for us. But last week we met with um, M S B A, specifically the F A S meeting, which is facilities, facilities assessment, manage, facilities assessment, what is it?
Comatic.
Acronyms. Facilities.
Assessments.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee, sorry.
Anyway, sorry, there's so many, there's so many um, different acronyms for everything, but essentially it was uh, it, it was a, it was a meeting with our uh, building committee meeting with M S B A on pretty much the design of the building that we had, as well as, I think it was as it related to our educational plan. So presenting kind of what that plan was in regards to what we had incorporated from our educational plan for the design, as well as kind of the finances of the whole project. It seemed like they gave some really good feedback. We got really positive feedback from them um, in regards to like what we presented for the design of the school. They gave us some good feedback, I think. Um, at it, as it related to different projects that they had been involved with, um, some good suggestions for Studio G to look, maybe to look forward to like exploring. Um, and then I think as, I think it's on February twenty ninth, we have another meeting with M S B A on another review for the design. I'm not quite sure as to like what that specifically is for, whether it's like a vote to move forward. Um.
Stacy, it is a, a vote to move forward with the full board. So the subcommittee will present their findings to the, the full board and then they'll take a vote to uh, move us forward into the design phase of the project. And it's on February twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth, okay. Um, I think you guys had a tour of the school yesterday. Was it during the early release yesterday?
We, we did. We had some of our uh, council on aging members uh, come to Shaker Lane School and uh, we did a tour with them and answered any questions that they, they had and uh, successful tour. We had about eight or nine, I believe, uh, come through the tour with us and uh, had some, some good feedback. I mean, there's still obviously some uh, uh, concerns about how much will this cost? And, and uh, we, we do have a, a good plan with uh, using a debt exclusion to support that project. Uh, Steve Vannuti redid the calculation that uh, changes that first year number. It uh, I can't remember the, the price of the house. It was six hundred and seven thousand dollars. The initial assessment would be, would have been about eighteen hundred dollars with this new plan and, and putting money away every year until we, we take out the, the bond. It would bring those taxes down to anywhere between a thousand and eleven hundred dollars. Tax uh, calculator is activated and it's uh, will be placed on the uh, Shaker Lane Building website uh, as well as the town website. So our, our community can now uh, put their assessed number in for their, their house and uh, figure out what the taxation might be that first year.
That went out today on uh, email because I got it in my email box, the tax, tax calculator.
Oh, perfect. And kudos to, to Steve Vannuti. I mean, that was uh, certainly a heavy lift and he, he did a fantastic job of, of, of putting that through. And you know, in terms of, of the three boards working together, the, the product that we have are a result of those, of, of all of us working together to find a way to lower that uh, tax bill for, for that project, for the Shaker Lane project. So personally, I'm thrilled that we, we found a solution. And the plan that we have is, is certainly doable. It's conservative and, and I think that's what we're all looking for. I had the uh, pleasure of touring Florence Roach uh, Elementary School in Groton yesterday, and that was a Studio G project as well. It was nice to, to tour the school with the students and staff there. And uh, I was very impressed with the design of, of, of the elementary school. It uh, made it really special to be able to talk to teachers and students uh, about how they, how they felt about, you know, moving into a new school in September. A lot of excitement and, and uh, very beautiful school. So uh, it was nice to be able to, to have the opportunity to tour one of their schools that they've designed. And I think uh, I think that's, that's all I have. Stacy, anything else or?
I think those, those are our major things since the past, since our last, last meeting. So good progress. We got a good review, so that's good. They didn't, they didn't tell us it was trash and to start over again, so.
We're very positive.
Very good, good, very good. They're very impressed with the, with the entire plan. So that was nice to, I think, I think get a little validation after all of that work. So, yeah.
Good. Thank you. I'll just add, um, as we go about our day to day, uh, there are people out there that don't realize that this project is um, taking place or that uh, wheels are in motion. So as you talk to um, your neighbors, fellow Littleton citizens, just, you know, find a way to bring this into conversation. You can talk about your school committee efforts. How exciting this is. Um, you don't have to give them a ton of detail. You just need to let them know this is happening so that they then um, do some, you know, just so that they're aware. Because it's, it's mind blowing to me that there are people out there in Littleton that perhaps know, that don't know that this is, that all this work is being done. And they're going to get surprised um, at next town meeting when we offer hopefully an information session or the following town meeting when they're asked to vote on it. So we um, we need everybody walking into the room as educated as we possibly can. Um, budget subcommittee, um, this next one. So budget subcommittee presented to select board and finance committee. What was that, a couple of weeks ago? Um, great discussion. We presented a um, a budget with a three point five five percent increase, which had some newer type strategies, um, offsetting some salaries with some revenue sources. Um, adding a couple of positions, uh, increasing some funding in a couple of areas where we felt like we were underfunded. Um, continuing with that three-year plan for the transportation uh, shift from the three routes to the two routes. And at the end of that conversation, a lot of head nodding, a lot of thank yous. Um, so it appears that uh, the finance committee and the select board um, are in support of the presented budget uh, at this point in time. We will, um, Janine and I will formally present the budget to the school committee at a meeting in March. Well, that's when we'll um, make it official and then it'll be voted in um, or passed by the town at town meeting in May. So I'll also share that, just so that you folks are all aware. Um, Janine alluded to it a little bit earlier. Um, all the committees working together and a commitment towards the capital projects. So the school department um, has agreed to, bearing any unforeseen um, extraordinary expenses, that we are going to submit a um, capital projects request in the amount of zero dollars to the town for fiscal year twenty six, fiscal year twenty seven. We have gone ahead and outlined, um, I'll say approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of capital projects in the next couple of years that we plan to fund ourselves through school choice. This town then is going to acknowledge um, roughly nine hundred thousand dollars of money that they don't need to contribute towards school projects and fund the Shaker Lane or the um, Shaker Lane project with those dollars. So it's, we're literally pinching pennies to try to get everything we possibly can into this account so that when we need to um, raise money through a bond where uh, the dollar amount uh, felt by the taxpayers as small as possible. Anything to add there, Janine?
Um, there was also discussion about the, the, the high school roof. And the middle school roof. And that's, and that's, that, that's what we're talking about funding or, or, or working towards. I, and when you, you said, you said we were going to come back for, for Shaker Lane, I, I thought some of that was really for the roofing projects. You know, like we're, we're, we're funding, we're funding all our capital, our small capital projects.
Yep.
For the next two years.
Correct.
And, and working on um, working on what we're going to be doing. And then um, when we need these roof projects, we're, the town is going to work very closely with us to, to, to help us make sure that we're, they got, that's how I, that's how I.
You're absolutely right. So we've agreed, we've agreed to self-fund smaller projects to the tune of about nine hundred thousand dollars over the next two uh, fiscal years. There are some larger ticket items on the horizon, which um, we won't be able to fund ourselves. We, there are uh, M S B A programs for um, roofs and boilers. And we are going to apply in those programs as soon as we are eligible. We realize that we might not be accepted in year one. Uh, the thought process there is to just get on the radar. Um, hope that the roofs and the boilers can make it um, to the point where we are accepted so that we can get some funding. God forbid, um, they fail and we don't have any state funding. The problem just becomes larger for the town to try to um, solve. But yes, the larger items, we will not be able to self-fund. We'll need the town's help and we hope to use the M S B A program as well. Policy subcommittee? The. Oh, well, no, we have something in the agenda.
In chat, okay, sorry.
Yes. So uh, we updated the graduation requirements policy, I K F, to align with our competency determination that was approved this evening. This is a first reading of the policy and the changes are, are indicative of, of insertion of the, the CD determination that we voted on tonight. I want to point out that the revised date uh, would be February twenty seventh, uh, twenty twenty five, rather than February sixth. Tonight is a first reading of the policy. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't. These were all of the, this was all of the information covered in the previous presentation.
That's correct.
Any questions from any committee members as you read through that? Or did the presentation answer any questions you might have had? Good. Could I receive a motion for the first reading of um, I K F?
It's. It's, is the motion that you're looking for to approve the first reading?
To accept the first reading.
Accept the, all right. I move that we accept the first reading of the graduation requirements policy I K F.
Motion made by Elaine?
Seconded.
Seconded by Beano. This will be a roll call vote. Elaine?
Elaine Sandman, yes.
Beano?
Beano Patel, yes.
Janine?
Janine Wood, yes.
Stacy?
Uh, Stacy Scott, yes.
We're keeping you up. Justin McCarthy votes yes as well. All right, we um, already talked about Shaker Lane Building Committee, so I don't think there's any further updates there. Um, bef, uh, before we look to adjourn, I'll just announce that our next school committee meeting is February 27th, 2025. We hope to be back in person, police station. That meeting would be about a month um, after the meeting where we, our last week's, our last meeting where we talked about um, turn time on assignments and things like that. So the school committee would look for some sort of update. Um, if that could be on the agenda as well as our typical business, um, that would be appreciated. Any other items that the school committee wishes to discuss before we look to adjourn? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Stacy, seconded by Janine. This will be a roll call vote. Stacy?
Stacy Scott, yes.
Janine?
Janine Wood, yes.
Beano?
Beano Patel, yes.
Elaine?
Elaine Sandman, yes.
And Justin McCarthy votes yes as well. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Justin.
All right, have a good night.
Good job, everybody.